Hello everyone, today we will be doing the summary of Union Budget 2023-24. Let's begin, introduction. As per Article 112 of the Constitution, Union Budget is basically the statement of estimated receipts and expenditure of the government. Budget word is not mentioned in the Constitution. So what is mentioned in the Constitution is Annual Financial Statement. Department of Economic Affairs Ministry of Finance is the nodal body responsible for preparing the budget while budget is presented by the Finance Minister. As you might have seen, Nirmala Sitaraman, a Finance Minister presented budget. Then Union Budget is classified into Revenue Budget and Capital Budget. Part A of the budget is macroeconomic part of the budget where various schemes and priorities of government are announced and allocations are made to several sectors. Part B of the budget deals with the Finance Bill which contains taxation proposals such as income tax revisions and indirect taxes. A Finance Bill is a money bill as defined in the article 110 of the Constitution. So this is a quality question which we all have studied at one time or another. So Finance Bill is basically a money bill. Defined under Article 110 Income Constitution of India. Moving on, major budget documents presented to the Parliament besides. Are the Finance Minister's Budget Speech, our annual financial statement under Article 112, demand for grants Article 113, Finance Bill under Article 110 and fiscal policy statements mandated under FRBM Act which are macroeconomic framework statement and medium term fiscal policy come fiscal policy strategy statement. So these are the documents, major documents presented, again we will go through them, the Budget Speech, Annual Financial Statement under Article 112, Demand for Grants under Article 113, Finance Bill under Article 110 and Fiscal Policy Statements mandated under FRBM Act which is macroeconomic framework statement and medium term fiscal policy come fiscal policy strategy statement. So let's recall the articles, we have 112 which is the annual financial statement, then we have 113 which is demand for grants, then we have 110 which is financial bill, so 110 financial bill, 112 a budget or annual financial statement and 113 demand for grants, okay. Then other explanatory documents also presented are expenditure budget, receipt budget, expenditure profile, budget at a glance, memorandum explaining the provisions in the financial bill, outcome out, output outcome monitoring framework, key features of budget and implementation of budget announcements 2022-23. Now budget process, what's the process and how it is presented and placed in the Parliament? Budget is presented, the first step, then the general discussion of budget is done in both the houses, it's done in. Both houses. Then standing committees scrutinize individual ministers' demand for grants, then detailed discussion and voting on demand for grants in Lok Sabha. Appropriation and finance bill is passed. So Budget 2023-24 is the first budget in Amritkal. Amritkal is the the next 25 years to our centenary of independence, that is this is the 75th year onwards to 100th year of independence. The 25 year period we are calling it Amritkal. So this budget is the first budget in Amritkal which is roadmap of the next 25 years from India 75 to India at 100. A three-pronged focus driven by four transformational opportunities constitute the foundation of an Amritkal. What is the vision of Amritkal? It is an empowered and inclusive economy. Opportunities for citizens with focus on youth, growth and job creation and strong and stable macroeconomic environment. What are the four transformative opportunities? Economic empowerment of women. PM Vishwa Karma Kaushal Samman, PM Vikas tapping the potential of tourism. Green growth leading to efficient use of energy across sectors and green jobs. Okay. So let me just write here Amritkal. Amritkal is India at 75 to India at 100. Three-pronged. Vision. And four. Transformative. Opportunities. It's mentioned over here. Opportunities for citizens with focus on youth, growth and job creation, strong and stable macroeconomic environment. Then for transformative opportunities is economic empowerment of women, PM Vikas tapping the potential of tourism and green growth which will lead to green jobs. Party. Budget proposal for 2023-24 rests on seven guiding pillars which is Sapta Rishi in the Amritkal. Sapta Rishi is the seven priorities of the budget 2023-24 which is inclusive development, reaching the last mile, infrastructure and investment, unleashing the potential, green growth, youth power and financial sector. So what are the five sectors of Sapta Rishi? Sapta Rishi. The seven. Priorities of this budget. Inclusive development. Reaching the last mile. Infrastructure and investment. Unleashing the potential. Green growth. Youth power. Financial sector. So this is the seven priority sectors or seven priorities which will be labeling as Sapta Rishi. Okay. Priority one is inclusive development. Agriculture and cooperation, our digital public infrastructure for agriculture we will will be built as an open source, open standard and interoperable public good digital public infrastructure for agriculture. It aims to promote farmer-centric solutions related to inputs, marketing etc. Then Agriculture Accelerator Fund to encourage semi-agri startups in rural areas and enhancing productivity of cotton crop aims to adopt a cluster-based and value chain approach through PPP, public partner, private ship. Public partner, public private partnership PPP. Okay, so we have Agricultural Accelerator Fund for agri startups, we want startups in the agricultural area in rural region. Then we want to enhance the productivity of cotton crop which will aim to adopt a cluster-based value chain approach through PPP. Then we have Atmanerbar Horticulture Clean Plant Program. Okay, what's that? Atmanerbar Horticulture Clean Plant Program aim to boost the availability of disease-free quality planting material for high-value horticulture crops at an outlay of 2200 crores. Then Global Hub for Millets referred to as Sri Anna. Okay, Millets the key term which. Millets is all-time important this year. Sri. Anna. For this, Indian Institute of Millet Research, it's in Hyderabad, will be supported as the center of excellence, okay, then agricultural credit. Sorry for the pause, we had a bird emergency, moving on, Malatia. So Millets were are referred to as Sri Anna and for this Indian Institute of Millet Research Hyderabad will be supported as a center of excellence. Then we have Agricultural Credit rupees 20 lakh crore credit for animal husbandry, dairy and fishing sector. Then new subscheme of PM Matasi Sampatha Yojana. Then we have. PM. Matasi. Sampatha Yojana. It will be launched with a targeted investment of 6000 crores, then cooperation. Our government is promoting cooperative-based economic development model. Especially for small and marginal farmers and other marginalized sections, government has initiated computerization of 63,000 primary agricultural credit societies and enabling them to become multipurpose PSCs. Primary agricultural credit societies also aim to facilitate setting up cooperative societies in uncovered Panjatin villages in the next five years. Okay. So what are our focus, we have Millets, Horticulture, Agricultural Credit, then Cooperation and Computerization of PSCs and also setting up cooperative societies in uncovered Panjatin villages. So yeah, priority one inclusive development, government philosophy of Sabka Saath Sabka Vikas. Has facilitated inclusive development and given overall priority to the underprivileged. Vanchitthu ko. Vadiyath. Affordable health for all, nursing colleges, sickle cell anemia elimination machine, multi-disciplinary courses or medical devices, then agriculture and cooperation, digital public infrastructure for agriculture, Agricultural Accelerator Fund, enhancing productivity of cotton crop, Atmanerbar Horticulture Clean Plant Program, Global Hub for Millets, Sri Anna, new subscheme of PM Matasi Sampatha Yojana and cooperative-based economic development. This is like a. Summary, hmm summary of summary, that's all it is, okay. Then now accessing education and schooling, district institutions for education and training, national digital library of for children and adolescents, okay. Then adorable health for all, there will be nursing colleges. 157 new nursing colleges, co-location with existing 157 medical colleges established since 2014 and sickle cell anemia elimination mission, mission to eliminate sickle cell anemia by 2047. What is it? Elimination. Of. Sickle. Cell. Anemia. By 2047, the last year of Amritkal, the 100th year of independence, okay. Focus on awareness creation, universal screening of 7 crore people in the age group of 0 to 40 years in affected tribal areas. Then multi-disciplinary courses for medical devices to ensure availability of skilled manpower for futuristic medical technologies, high-end manufacturing and research is important. Pharma innovation, a new program to promote research and innovation in pharmaceuticals will be taken up through centers of excellence. Then assessing education and schooling, teachers' training, the district institutes of education and training will be developed as vibrant institutes of excellence for this purpose, national digital library for children and adolescents will be developed. Priority two, reaching the last mile, again affordable health for all. Priority two and priority two, the reaching the last mile, it's no one to be left behind. Ah, the missions here are support for poor prisoners, okay, aspirational districts and blocks program, Pradhana Mantri PV TG Development Mission, Ekavvi Model Residential Schools, Waterford Broadcrown Region, Bharat Shared Repository for Inscriptions, Bharat Sri, PM Avas Yojana. Oh, aspirational districts and block program, it covers 500 blocks for saturation of essential government services. Then Pradhana Mantri PV TG, particularly vulnerable tribal group development mission and amount of 15,000 crore will be made available to the implementation of the mission in the next three years under the developmental action plan for the Shadual tribes. Ekavvi Model Residential Schools, in the next three years, our center will recruit 38,800 teachers and support staff for the 740 Ekavvi Model Residential Schools serving 3.5 lakh tribal students. Then Waterford Broadcrown Region, for upper Badra. Project, central assistance of 5,300 crore will be given, PM Avas Yojana. The outlay for PM Avas Yojna is been enhanced by 66%. In Bharat Shared Repository of Inscriptions, Bharat Sri, it will be set up in a digital epigraphy museum and with digitization of 1 lakh ancient inscriptions in the first stage. Support for poor prisoners, for poor persons who are in prisons and unable to afford the penalty or the bail amount, required financial support will be provided for poor people unable to afford the penalty or bail amount. Okay, this is the last mile, catering for the people who are get, who got left behind in the previous schemes. They'll be focused on in the reaching the last mile. Priority three, infrastructure and investment, first of all investment, capital investment as driver of growth and jobs. Capital investment outlay has been increased to 10 lakh crore which would be 3.3% of GDP. Capital. Investment. As a driver. Of. Growth and jobs. At this 10 lakh crore equaling to 3.3% of. GDP. Then effective capital expenditure, it has been budgeted at 4.5% of GDP. Effective. Capital. Expenditure. It is. 4.5% of. GDP. Then we have support to state governments. For capital investment, continue the 50-year interest-free loan to state governments for one more year with significantly enhanced outlay of 1.3 lakh crore. Continue the 50-year interest-free loan to state governments for one more year, okay, the one which was given in the COVID era. With a significantly enhanced outlay of 1.3 lakh crore and enhancing opportunities for private investment in infrastructure. Establishing new infrastructure finance secretariat. Okay, what will it do? More private investment in infrastructure including railways, roads, urban infrastructure and power. What does this priority three entails? It is a large multiplied impact on growth and employment after the subdued period of pandemic. Private investment are growing again, ensuring last mile connectivity. Harmonized master list of infrastructure, highest ever outlay for railways, 100 critical transport infrastructure projects, regional connectivity, coastal shipping. Investment, capital investment as driver of growth and jobs, effective capital expenditure, support to state governments for capital investment, enhancing opportunities for private investment in infrastructure. Then urban development, sustainable cities of tomorrow, making cities ready for municipal bonds, Urban Infrastructure Development Fund and Urban Sanitation. Okay, so ensuring last mile connectivity, harmonized master list of infrastructure. It will be reviewed by an expert committee to become suitable for Amritkal. Then railways, a capital outlay of 2.4 lakh crore is the highest ever outlay. Highest. Ever. Outlay. To railways. 2.4 lakh crores. Then logistics, 100 critical transport infrastructure projects for first and last mile connectivity for ports, coal, steel, fertilizer and food grain sectors have been identified, regional connectivity, 50 additional airports, heliports, water aerodromes and advanced landing grounds will be revived for improving regional air connectivity and coastal shipping to be promoted through PPP model. Urban development, sustainable cities of tomorrow, states and cities will be encouraged to undertake urban planning, reforms and actions, making cities ready for municipal bonds through property tax governance reforms and ring fencing user charges on urban infrastructure. Okay, what are municipal bonds? This is very important, I was talking about that, yeah. Municipal bonds. Through. Property tax. Governance reforms. And ring fencing. User charges. On urban. Infrastructure. Urban Infrastructure Development Fund will be established through the use of priority sector lending shortfall. This will be managed by NHB National Housing Bank for creation of urban infrastructure in tier two and tier three cities. Urban. Infrastructure. Development. Fund. Will be managed. By National Housing Bank. For creation of. Urban. Infrastructure. In tier two and. Three cities. Then urban sanitation, 100% mechanical de-slaging of septic tanks and sewers to transition from manhole to machine hole mode, 100% mechanical. 100%. Mechanical. De-slaging. Machine hole mode. Machine hole. Mode. Enhanced focus will be provided for scientific management of dry and wet waste. Priority four, unleashing the potential, unleashing the potential is for good governance is the key to a nation's progress. Towards transparent and accountable administration, Vivasse Vishwas relief for MSMEs. Vivasse Vishwas two, settling contractual disputes, result-based financing, phase three of E-coach project, fintech services, entity Digi Locker, 5G services, lab grown diamonds, okay. Then good governance, Jan Vishwas Bill, Centers of Excellence for Artificial Intelligence, National Data Governance Policy, Simplification of Know Your Customer Process KIC, one-stop solution for identity and address updating, common business identifier and unified filling process. After in under good governance, we have Jan Vishwas Bill introduced for furthering the trust-based governance and amend 42 central acts. Okay. Good governance. We have. Jan. Vishwas Bill. Then National Data Governance Policy to unleash innovation and research by startups and academia. Centers of Excellence for Artificial Intelligence for realizing the vision of make AI in India and make AI work for India, three centers of excellence for AI will be set up. Simplification of Know Your Customer Process, adopting a risk-based instead of one-size-fits-all approach. One solution, one-stop solution for identity and address updating by using digital Digi Locker service and Aadhaar as foundational identity. Common Business Identifier, the PAN will be used as the common identifier for all digital systems of specified government agencies. Unified filing process for awaiting the need of separate submission of same information to different government agencies. Unified filing process. Then towards transparent and accountable administration, we have Vivasse Vishwas one relief for MSMEs. In case of failure by MSMEs to execute contracts during the COVID period, 95% of the profit amount of relating to bid or performance security will be returned to them by government and government undertakings. Vivasse Vishwas two, settling contractual disputes, voluntary settlement scheme with standardized terms will be introduced. This will be done by offering graded settlement terms pending on tendency level of the dispute. Result-based financing, input-based to result-based financing for better allocation of scarce resources. Input. Based. To result. Based financing. On better. Allocation of. Scars. Resources. E-coach, phase three of the E-coach project will be launched, fintech services. To enable more fintech innovations innovative side services, the scope of documents available in Digi Locker for individuals will be expanded. Entity Digi Locker, an entity Digi Locker will be set up for use by MSMEs, large business and charitable trusts. 5G services, 100 labs for developing applications using 5G services will be set up in the engineering institutions. Lab grown diamonds, it is a technology and innovation-driven emerging sector with high employment potential. Research and development grant will be provided to one of the IITs for five years. Priority five, green growth, India is moving forward firmly for the. Panchamrit and net zero carbon emissions by 2070 to usher in. Panch Amrit and net zero carbon emissions by twenty seventy to usher in green industrial economic transition. Panch Amrit. And net. Zero. Carbon. Emission. By twenty seventy. To usher in. Green. Industrial. And. Economic. Transition. We have green hydrogen mission, galvanizing organic bioagro resources than scheme. Battery energy storage system, Bhartiya Prakritik Kheti Bio Input Resource Centers. Green credit program. P M Pranam, Mistry, Mangrove Initiative for Shoreline Habitats and Tangible Incomes. I was talking to someone and this Mistry thing came around. Ah you must have known that West Bengal has the highest percentage of mangroves. Right? Highest mangrove crown. And probably that's how they got the term Mistry. Ah to just signify that West Bengal thing and they gave the acronym Mangrove Initiative. For Shoreline Habitats and Tangible Incomes, it was pretty cool. Because once you realize how they got these acronyms, it becomes easier to remember, otherwise you'll get lost. So Mistry. Is. Mangrove. Initiative. For shoreline. Habitats. And tangible. Incomes. Then we have Amrit Dharohar. First is moving forward to achieve climate change. Ah green hydrogen. Mission facilitated, facilitate transition of the economy to low carbon intensity. Target is to reach an annual production of five M M T by twenty thirty. Battery energy storage system, developing capacity of four thousand M W H will be supported with viability gap funding. Enable energy evaluation evacuation interstate transmission system of. For evacuation and grid integration of thirteen gigawatt renewable energy from Ladakh. Okay, Amrit Dharohar. Ah this seems important, I don't know the significance of it right now, but we'll come back to it later. Amrit Dharohar promoting promote local communities unique conservation styles. For wetland implementing implementing in next three years to encourage optimal use of wetlands. Okay. Amrit. Dharohar. Promote. Local. Communities. Unique. Conservation. Style for. Wetland. Then we have green credit program will be notified under the Environment Protection Act. Including behavioral change and incentivize environmentally sustainable and responsive actions by companies. Individuals and local bodies, P M Pranam, P M Program for Restoration. Awareness, nourishment and amelioration of mother earth. Okay, aim to incentivize states and Indian territories to promote alternative fertilizers and balanced use of chemical fertilizers. P M Pranam. Program for Restoration, Awareness, Nourishment and Amelioration of Mother Earth. Okay, Pranam is P M Program for Restoration, Awareness, Nourishment. Amelioration of Mother Earth, this is for. Promoting. Alternative. Fertilizers. And balanced user. Chemical fertilizers. Then Gobardhan. Gobardhan is galvanizing organic bioagro resources than. Galvanizing organic bioagro resources than scheme. Five hundred new waste to wealth plants under Gobardhan for promoting circular economy. It includes compressed biogas, C V G plants, urban plants, community or cluster-based plants. It's highly important. Gobardhan. Then we have. Bhartiya Prakriti Prakrit Kheti Bio Input Resource Centers, Bhartiya Prakritik. Prakritik Khetni Bio Input Resources Center, ten thousand Bio Input Resource Center will be set up. Creating a national level distributed micro fertilizer and pesticide manufacturing network. Aim is that over the next three years, government will facilitate one crore farmers to adopt natural farming. Mistry, Mangrove Initiative for Shoreline Habitats and Tangible Incomes, Mangrove Plantation. Along the coastline and on salt pan lands through convergence between Mandragas, Kampavand and other sources. Priority six is youth power. To empower youth and help the Amrit P D realize their dreams formulate formulated the national education policy. Focused on scaling adopted economic policies that facilitate job creation at scale and have supported business opportunities. Unified Scale India Digital Platform, Pradhana Mantri Kaushal Vikas Yojna four point O, setting up of Unity Mall in State. National Apprenticeship Promotion Scheme and boasting tourism. Pradhana Mantri Kaushal Vikas Yojna four point O, to scale youth for international opportunities. Thirty Skill India International Centers will be set up across different states. Unified Skill India Digital Platform for enabling demand-based formal scaling, linking with employers. Including M S M Es, facilitating access to entrepreneurship schemes. National Apprenticeship Promotion Scheme, provides stipend support to forty-seven lakh youth in three years. Red benefit transfer under a Pan India National Apprenticeship Promotion Scheme will be rolled out. Boasting tourism, at least fifty destinations will be selected through challenge mode and developed. As complete package for domestic and foreign tourists, sector-specific scaling and entrepreneurship development will be. De-otailed to achieve the objectives of Dekho Apna Desh Initiative. Under the Vibrant Villages Program, tourism infrastructure and amenities will also be facilitated in border villages. In setting up of Unity Mall in State, in state capital or most prominent tourism center or the financial capital. For promotion and sale of their own O D O Ps, one district, one product and G I products and other handicraft products. Unity Mall. O D O Ps. One district. One. Product. G I. Products. And. Other. Handicraft. Products. Priority seven, financial sector. Credit, let's see what comes under financial sector. Reforms in the financial sector and innovative use of technology have led to financial inclusion at scale. Better and faster service delivery, ease of access to credit and participation in financial markets. First is National Finance Information Registry and Credit Guarantee for M S M Es, Data Embassy. Financial Sector Regulations, Fiscal Management, Capacity Building in Securities Market. Azadi ka amrit mahotsav mahila samman bachat patra benefit for senior citizens. Credit guarantee for M S M Es, this will enable additional collateral free guaranteed credit of two lakh crore. Cost of the credit will be reduced by about one percent. National Financial Information Registry, it will be set up to serve as the central repository of financial and ancillary information. This will facilitate efficient flow of credit. Promote financial inclusion and foster financial stability, a new legislative framework will govern this credit. Our public infrastructure will be designed in consultation with R B I. Then we have financial sector regulations, to simplify ease and reduce cost of compliance. Financial sector regulators will be requested to carry out a comprehensive review of existing regulations. Data Embassy, a country is looking for digital continuity solutions. Gift I F S C will facilitate setting up their data embassies, capacity building in securities market. C B will be empowered to develop. Regulate, maintain and enforce norms and standards for education in national institutes of securities market. National. Institutes for. National Institutes of Securities Market. Securities. Market. This is being. Maintained. Enforced, developed everything by C B. So if they ask who is the nodal body to enforce the norms and standards for education in national institutes of securities markets. It's C B. Moving on, we have digital payments, fiscal support for digital public infrastructure will continue in twenty twenty-three twenty-four. Then Azadi ka amrit mahotsav mahila samman bachat patra. One-time new small savings scheme, mahila samman saving certificate M S S C. Will be made available for a two-year period to March twenty twenty-five. Mahila samman. Savings. Certificate. M S S C. Made available. For two year. Period. Then we have, ah this will offer deposit facility up to two lakh in the name of the women or girls for a tenure of two years. At fixed interest of seven point five percent with partial withdrawal option, this is a very good option. Ah up to. Two lakh. The name of. Girl or woman. At seven point five percent. With. Partial. Withdrawal option. Then we have benefits for senior citizens, the maximum deposit limit for senior citizen savings scheme. Will be enhanced from fifteen lakh up to thirty lakh. Okay, the maximum deposit limit for monthly income account scheme will be enhanced from four point five lakh to nine lakh. For single account and from nine lakh to fifteen lakh for joint account. Fiscal management, fifty-year interest-free loan to states. It has to be spent on capital expenditure within twenty twenty-three twenty-four, the loan will be partly conditional. And fiscal deficit of states, states will be allowed a fiscal deficit of three point five percent of G S D P. Over zero point five percent will be tied to power sector reforms. Three point five percent of G S D P. Ah. Allowed. Fiscal deficit. To state. Of which zero point five percent. Tied to. Power sector. Reforms. Over here we have sources of deficit financing, let's check it out. Sources of financing F T, we have market, okay, market is a good share. Then yellow one is securities against small savings, orange one is state provident funds, very low. Other receipts which is internal debt in public account, then red one is external debt. Negative we have drawn down of cash balance, negative cash balance, okay, I don't know what that means, let's find out. Part B, direct taxes, simplifying personal income tax regime. No income tax for persons with income up to seven lakh in the new tax regime. The tax structure in the new personal tax regime has been changed by reducing number of slabs. To five and increasing the tax exemption limit up to three lakh. Tax slabs. Reduce to five. And tax. Exemption. Limit up to. Three lakh. Reduction of the highest surcharge rate from thirty-seven percent to twenty-five percent. Under new tax regime for income above two crores, reduction of the highest surcharge rate. From thirty-seven percent to twenty-five percent, okay, for income above. Highest. Surcharge. Rate. It has decreased twenty-five percent. For income. Above. Two crores. Then we have new income tax regime has been made the default tax regime. However, citizens will continue to have the option to avail the benefits of old tax regime, trends in tax receipts. Ah we have gross tax receipts, then direct taxes and indirect taxes. You can see from here, direct taxes are definitely higher than indirect taxes. Okay, percentage. Six five eleven. The sum of these two is this, percentage of G D P. Gross. Tax. Receipts. Is a eleven point one percent of G D P. Direct. Taxes is. Six percent of. Six percent of G D P. Indirect. Taxes. Five point one percent of. G D P. Okay, moving on, rollout of common I T return form for taxpayer convenience and strengthening of previous redress mechanism to further improve taxpayer services. M S M E's and professionals. Currently, micro enterprises with turnover up to two crore and with certain professionals with turnover up to fifty lakh can avail the benefit of presumptive taxation. Budget proposed to enhance limits of presumptive taxation. Up to three crores for M S M E's and seventy-five lakh for professionals with cash payment less than five percent. Presumptive. Taxation. Three crores for. M S M E's. And seventy-five. And seventy-five lakh. For. Professionals. With cash. Payment. Less than. Three percent. Any payment made to M S M E shall be allowed as expenditure only when payment is actually made. Cooperative sector, benefits of concessional tax rate of fifteen percent to new cooperatives at commence manufacturing by thirty first March twenty twenty four. Fifteen percent. Concessional. Tax rate. To. New cooperatives. Sugar cooperatives can claim payments made to sugar cane farmers for the period prior to assessment twenty sixteen seventeen as expenditure. T D S limit, tax reduction at source limit on cash withdrawals increased to three crores for cooperative societies. Okay, then higher limit of two lakh per member of cash deposits and loans by primary agricultural cooperatives, P S Es and primary cooperative agriculture and rural development banks, P C A R D Vs, okay, two lakh. Um, two lakh per. Member. Then startups, date of incorporation for income tax benefits. Two startups to be extended up to thirty first March twenty twenty four. Time limit for carry forward of losses and change of shareholding of startups increased from seven years to ten years. Then reducing tendency of appeals, hundred joint commissioners for disposal of small appeals to be deployed. Better targeting of task, tax concessions to cap reduction from capital gains and investment in residential house to ten crores. Improving compliance and tax administration, reduction in the minimum time limit, time period required to be provided by the transfer pricing offer to assess for production of documents and information from thirty days to ten days. Transfer pricing officer, okay, to assess. The rationalization, removing the minimum threshold of ten thousand rupees for T D S and clarifying taxability relating to online gaming. Conversion of gold into electronic gold receipt and vice versa will not be treated as capital gain. Okay. Conversion of. Gold. Into. Electronic. Gold. Receipt and. Vice versa. Will. Not be. Treated as. Capital. Gain. T D S rate to be reduced from thirty percent to twenty percent on taxable portion of E P F withdrawal in non pan cases, taxation on income from market linked debentures. E E status to Agni Veer Fund, payment received from Agni Veer Corpus Fund by Agni Veers enrolled in Agni Pad scheme twenty-two proposed to be exempted from taxes. Payments. To. Agni Veers. From. Agni Veer Corpus. Exempted. From. Taxes. Others, extension of period of tax benefits to funds relocating to I F S C Gift City. Extended up to thirty first March twenty twenty five, allowing carry forward of losses on strategic in disinvestment including that of I D B I Bank. Rupee comes from, okay, and where does rupee goes to? Now let's see. The highest share over here is thirty-four percent and rupee comes from borrowing and other liabilities. Then, we have goods and services taxes. Then we have income tax fifteen percent, corporation tax fifteen percent. Then union excise duty seven percent, non-tax receipts six percent, customs four percent, non-debt capital receipts two percent. So. Rupee. Comes from. Borrowing. Thirty-four percent. Then G S T. And other. Seventeen percent. Then corporation tax. Equals to income tax. Both are at fifteen percent. Then. Union. Excise duty. At seven percent. Then. Non-tax. Receipts. At six percent. Customs. At four percent. And non. Debt. Capital. Receipts. At two percent. Here to note. Is. Boring is the highest, G S T is second highest, then comes corporation tax, income tax, union excise duty, non-tax receipts, customs, non-debt capital receipts. Then where does money goes to? The highest over here is twenty percent, interest payments. Twenty percent of our money goes to interest payments and thirty-four comes from borrowing, okay. Then there is a state share of taxes and duties eighteen percent, central sector scheme seventeen percent. Centrally sponsored schemes nine percent, finance commission and other transfers nine percent. Defense eight percent, other expenditure eight percent, subsidies seven percent and pensions four percent. Let's write it down. Rupee. Goes to. That seems like a better idea. Cool. Interest payments. Interest payment is twenty percent. Then state share of taxes and duties. States. Share. Of taxes. And duties. Is eighteen percent. Then we have. Central sector schemes seventeen percent. Central sector. Schemes. Seventeen percent. Then we have centrally sponsored schemes nine percent. Centrally. Sponsored. Schemes. Nine percent. Then finance commission and other transfers. Finance. Commission. And other. Transfers. Is nine percent. Then we have defense. At eight, sorry. At eight percent. Other. Expenditure. Eight percent. Subsidies. Seven percent. And pensions. Four percent. So, highest is interest payments, then state share of taxes and duties. Central sector schemes, centrally sponsored schemes, finance commissions and other transfers, defense, other expenditure, subsidies and pensions. This is the share of. Where money comes from and this is where money goes to. Receipts and expenditures, yes, indirect taxes. Change in G S T laws, decriminalization of certain offenses under one thirty-two of C G S T Act. Obstruction or preventing any officer in this charge of his duties. Deliberate tempering of material evidence and failure to supply the information. It has been decriminalized. Then reducing the compounding of offenses from the present range of fifty percent to one fifty percent of tax mounted to the range of twenty-five percent to hundred percent. Then raising the minimum threshold of tax amount for launching prosecution under G S T from one crore to two crores. Then amended to restrict filing of returns to a maximum period of three years from due date. Proposed to enable unregistered suppliers and composition taxpayers. Unregistered suppliers and composition taxpayers to make interest rate supply of goods through e-commerce operators E C Os. Change in custom laws. Custom Act nineteen sixty-two to be amended to specify a time limit of nine months from date of filing application for passing final order by settlement commission. Number of basic customs duty rates on goods other than textiles and agriculture reduced to thirteen from twenty-two. Okay, sector specific proposals. We have green mobility. To avoid cascading of taxes, budget proposed to exempt excise duty on G S T paid compressed biogas. Exempt. Excise. Duty on. G S T paid. Compressed. Biogas. Okay. Then customs duty exemption to be extended to import. Of capital goods and machinery required for manufacturing of lithium ion cells for batteries used in electric vehicles. Custom duty. Exemption. On. Machinery. Import. For. Lithium ion. Cells. Used in electric vehicles. For I T and electronics to deepen domestic value addition and manufacture of mobile phones. Relief in customs duty on important certain parts and inputs like camera lens. Okay, relief in custom duty. Basic custom duty B C D to be reduced in parts of open cells of T V panels to two point five percent. Concessional duty on lithium ion cells for batteries will continue for another year, okay. Then electrical, to rectify inversion of duty structure and encourage manufacturing of electric kitchen chimneys, increase in the B C D on electric chimney from seven point five percent to fifteen percent and reduction on heat quells from twenty percent to fifteen percent. Chemicals and petrochemicals to support ethanol blending program, exempting B C D on denatured ethanol alcohol. Basic custom duty. Exemption. Of. Basic custom. Duty. B C D. On. De-natured. Ethyl. Alcohol. Reducing B C D on acid grade flowers par on crude glycerine to two point five percent. In marine products, reduction in B C D on key inputs for domestic manufacture of shrimp fed to boost export. Shrimp feed, okay, okay. Then B C D on seeds, I should write it right. It's not exemption though, it's reduction. Reduced B C D. Of. Shrimp feed, I don't know what that means. B C D on seeds used in the manufacturing of lab-grown diamonds to be nullified from current. Five percent to support diamond industry. Exemption. Of B C D. On seeds. Used in. Lab grown. Diamonds. To enhance the duty differential. Custom duties to be increased on articles made from golden platinum. Custom duty increased. On gold and platinum. I'm sorry, A U is the chemical name for gold. And platinum is P T. Increase the import duty on silver door bars in articles to line them with golden platinum. In compounded rubber to curb circumvention of duty. B C D rate on compounded rubber to be increased from ten percent to twenty-five percent. Okay. Increased B C D. On. Compounded. Rubber. National calamity contingent duty N C C D. On specified cigarettes. To be revised up to upwards by about sixteen percent. Okay. Duty on. Cigarettes. I'm sorry, there's only one. I'm sorry, there's only one hour in cigarettes. And you don't know, you don't know. Sixteen percent. That's the end, okay, now we have a glossary, let's go through it. Glossary, Amritkal, Amritkal is a roadmap of next twenty five years, okay. Effective capital expenditure, capital expenditure taken together with the provision made for creation of capital assets. Through grant in its to state, lab grown diamonds. They are produced using specific technology which mimics the geological processes that grow natural diamonds. They are not the same as diamonds, not the same as diamond stimulants. LGDs are chemically, physically and optically diamond and thus are difficult to identify as lab grounds. Okay. Custom beauty, it refers to the tax imposed on goods when they are transported across international borders. Government uses its duty to raise its revenues, safeguard domestic industries and regulate movement of goods. Types of custom duties excludes basic custom duty, countervailing duty, additional customs duty, protective duty and anti-dumping duty. Which is done on Chinese goods. Capital gains, it is increasing the value of wealth of a bondholder due to an appreciation or reduction in the price of her bonds in the bond. GIFT IFC, IFCSE. Gujarat International Finance Tech City Company Limited. GIFT is being developed as the country's first international financial service center. Okay. Gujarat. International. Finance. Tech City Company Limited. This is gift. Is being developed. As the. Country's. First IFSC, that is. International. Financial. Services. Centers. Gujarat International Finance. This just became messy. IFSC provides services to customers outside jurisdiction of domestic economy dealing with flows of finance. Financial products and services across borders. Provides. Services. Across. Borders. Presumptive taxation. Section forty four D of Indian Income Tax Act defines the rules of presumptive taxation. It allows one to pay tax based on presumptive income. One doesn't need to estimate income by deducting expenses from revenue. One can simply take a percentage of total revenue and pay tax on that. National calamity contingent duty NCCD. It is levied under Finance Act two thousand one as a duty of exercise on specified duties at trade specified under the seventh schedule of the Finance Act two thousand one. It is used to finance national disaster relief fund and additional budgetary support to provide as and when necessary. Okay. NCCD. Finances, NDRF. This is national calamity contingent. Yeah, I'm not gonna write, you can write it. National. Calamity. Contingent. Duty. This is national disaster relief fund. National. Disaster. Relief. Fund. Inverted duty structure, situations where import duties on import goods are higher than that on finished goods. And inverted duty structure discourages domestic value addition. What does? Inverted duty. Structure means, it is when. Import. Duty on goods. Is higher. Than that on finished goods. It's funny. EE tax category stands for exempt, exempt, exempt. The individuals putting their money in EE categorized investment options will be eligible for a tax break. Upon investment at the time of filing the income tax returns. Transfer pricing is an accounting and taxation practice. That allows for pricing transactions internally within businesses in between subsidiaries that operate under common control or ownership. The transfer pricing practice extends to cross border transactions as well as domestic ones. Transfer. Pricing. Both. Domestic and. International. Looks like it's the end of our budgetary discussion. Thank you for being with me till the end. And see you a next day.